Good morning, I'm calling Human Services and Department for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It looks like John O'Neill is not here, he's been excused, so I will call Steve Valley up. Steve, good morning.
Good morning. This morning I have a proclamation that I'd like to have you approve and forward to the full board, and this is being sponsored, I guess is the word, by Dave Blades and by Bill Farabee. And you have it before you, and it is a proclamation recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Month and September 8th to 14th as National Suicide Prevention Week. Whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause of death among youths aged 15 to 24 years, and whereas the suicide rate in Essex County has been two times the rate for the rest of the state during the past 10 years, and whereas suicide has a devastating impact upon our families, communities, and businesses, and whereas suicide can be prevented by early recognition and appropriate intervention, and whereas it is important that all citizens and communities learn about the warning signs for suicide and how to connect individuals in crisis with assistance and care, and whereas recognizing Suicide Prevention Week and September as Suicide Prevention Month will increase knowledge of the factors that offer protection from suicidal behaviors and promote wellness and recovery for all citizens of Essex County. Now therefore, I, David Blades, as chairman and on behalf of the Human Services Committee, and I, William Farabee, as chairman and on behalf of the Essex County Board of Supervisors, do proclaim the month of September 2015 as Suicide Prevention Month and the week of September 8th to 14th, 2015, as Suicide Prevention Week in Essex County.
I guess I'd like to move that, do we have any to add in a second? Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, well, thank all of you for your support of this, and just as some advance publicity, we are planning to have a suicide awareness event right out here in the front yard on Tuesday, September 9th. That'll be the day after Labor Day. We're going to have, we have some great participation, Linda Beers and several other agencies and community members have been working on a Suicide Prevention Coalition for about a year now, and Patty Bashaw. We've had great ground support on this initiative, so we plan to have some good events out there. We're going to have music and lots of information and displays for people to see, so thanks for your support.
Thanks, Steve. Anything else? Any questions for mental health? Public health, Linda Beers?
So I have several resolutions, I'd like to go through those first and then move my budget one to the end so we can get through them first maybe in case you have questions. So the first resolution I have is to authorize to accept a New York State March of Dimes grant for the amount of $1,500.
Would somebody move that please? Mr. Goodwin, seconded by Mr. Harrington. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
So the second resolution I have is to accept $100,000 over the next five years for what's called Creating Healthy Schools Grants. It's creating healthy schools and communities. It is the second grant of Creating Healthy Places to Live, Work, and Play, which is ending. This one is specific to three school districts. It is Elizabeth Town, Mariah, and Ticonderoga. This money will be directed towards their communities and their school districts over the next five years. Clinton County actually got the grant, and I'm subcontracting with them to provide services for our county for $100,000, which will pay in full for a full-time health educator to carry out those programs.
Move, Mr. Mary Drew, seconded by Mr. Grinnell. Five, discussion? Mr. Bleed?
Any cost of?
No. It's the same as Creating Healthy Places, it's exact same kind of grant.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Carried.
I'm going to skip to the New York State Prevention Agenda, I'm going to apply for this. It's $2,000, there's no cost to us, it's actually, it's not really even a grant, it's an award. I'm hoping to get it to move the prevention agenda forward, and it's going to concentrate, I believe, on breastfeeding.
Would somebody move to permit public health to apply for this grant? Mr. Goodwin, do we have a second? Mr. Grinnell, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Okay, and then my last resolution, I have not come to the board since I've been the director, to write off what's considered or called bad debt. Bad debt is debt that we've had for, well, we haven't written off in seven years. I'm going to keep two years on the books because that's my customary, because it's still a potential for billing that, but that debt that you see before you, and I give you a pie chart in reference to how much that is, if you look at your pie chart, over that almost six-year period, five years, that's the total amount of money that we actually received, that proportion of the debt that is. Just to make you aware of, relative to healthcare collection statistics, the Association of Credit and Collection Professionals quoted this percentage. The national average for bad debt is 3.17. Our debt in this county comes in at 1.73%. So in healthcare, there's always people, whatever, there's glitches in billing, there's people that pass away before we can get their co-pays. There's a multitude of reasons for every one of this, for these. There were people that didn't pay, I provided that list to Dan Manning, couple, if you recall here at the board. There were tons of little co-pays and whatnot, and the board, we decided that pursuing that wasn't cost-effective, I'm going to say. It is a small percentage of this $150,000. So there's lots of reasons that go into why over seven years, $150,000 out of the eight million collected was not receivable, and I'm happy, I have it broken down to every single solitary payer, if anybody wants that detail, I'm happy to go over it with you. But again, in healthcare, there's often, I mean, there's, you can't, there's no policy that gets every penny of it.
Would somebody like to move it so we get it on the floor? Mr. Mary Drew, do we have a second? Mr. Grinnell, discussion? Mr. Bleed?
So I'm just curious, do we pay in advance, stand for these people? How do we accumulate the debt?
Well, if you provide the services in advance and then you bill either Medicaid or a private insurance company or Medicare, depending on who it is that qualifies for the service. At that point, there are certain things like the co-pays that because you have what is essentially visiting nurses, they don't collect money within the home, so those things are billed afterwards in terms of the co-pays and those. But the other, if you look at the pie chart breakdown, not the pie chart, the bar chart breakdown, you know, one of the things that I specifically asked Linda was, okay, are we getting better or worse at this, you know, because everybody's going to have a certain amount of loss within billing, and what I needed to know was, were we getting better or worse? Well, 2012 was our worst year, but there was a reason for that. That was the year that, before that, Medicaid and Medicare allowed a year for billing. During that 2012 year, they changed to a 90-day billing cycle. So there were, that's really what drove, I think, more losses in 2012, was that change in billing status.
So 1% of this debt is related to home care or home health services?
All of it. This is all, this is all the CHA.
Well, there's a piece of prevention in there, a small piece.
We talked about this, we talked about CHA, I don't know how long, five years now. So, and I think that, I think that the statement was made last year that CHA was operating at a profit all of a sudden. It wasn't for a long time, and all of a sudden, I think you and I had this conversation, Dan, you said, well, things are different now. It was a better debt.
They did get better.
I'm just curious if in fact 2012 was the year where there was the greatest amount of unpaid debt? How were they in the black?
Well, again, that's not, the unpaid debt in 2012 was 25,000 over what the average or so of the other years. That's not really the issue. The issue would, the visits increased, so that the year that we talked about, the only loss we had really was in the legacy cost because we had some health insurance. Because you have to understand that, you know, we deliver services for both state and federal government, but when somebody retires, that cost becomes our cost alone. So when you figure in some legacy costs, in that particular year, we were losing some money, not a huge amount. We're losing more money now.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, but there's a, there's a specific reason for that. Medicaid reduced the reimbursement rate by...
12%.
They cut us 12%. Again, everybody's getting hit with this Medicaid reduction in services, from nursing homes to hospitals to public health programs, everybody is being impacted by Steve Valley and mental health, by the reduction in Medicaid reimbursement, which is based upon, believe it or not, an attempt by the federal government to recoup more money to cover the cost of Obamacare.
I guess the point is that if they continue to decrease the Medicaid reimbursement, does it make sense? And evidently, we're losing money in that program now.
We are.
What's the feasibility?
Again, that's ultimately will be a choice this board will have to make. You know, I've had this discussion with Randy and both with Bill. You know, at some point, you have to decide, do you want to continue in this business? What's the value of it to you? What happens if you go out of business? All those things are encapsulated in a decision process that frankly has not fully occurred at this board level yet.
Well, what do you, what do you estimate the losses now? I'm just curious, because this is the first time we've talked about this.
Yeah, we are around $100,000. That's what our loss ratio is right now.
$100,000.
Yeah, yeah. But this is, again, this is separate and distinct from this.
Well, I know that, I know that. But this has just led me to think about this when I heard about it, and we have not discussed this in over a year, so, so my thought is, you know, that's just where I...
I mean, typically, we're billing, you know, a couple million dollars a year, I don't know the exact percentage of that that's Medicaid, but that's where the $100,000 difference is, it's in the reduction of Medicaid. You know, again, it's another, regardless of how we want to deal with it, ultimately, it's the federal government saying to the local government, we want you to pick up more of the cost.
All right, so let me ask another question. Off this, off this subject, but on CHA. We talked about this a year ago, and it was my impression that there were two other companies that had been licensed, or one other company had been licensed to do business in Essex County. Whatever happened with that, just so you, update me.
There were two companies that were provided what's essentially called a medallion to do business in Essex County. One of those voluntarily turned in their medallion and said, can't do business, sorry, we're gone. There is a second, there is one private company left doing business in Essex County, and they have a number of other counties throughout the state. Whether that makes their losses less or more, I do not know that, but I do know that when we come down to people requesting services, they're requesting Essex County public help more than they are the private company.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Mary.
And just because of what you mentioned before, Dan, if we got out of the business totally, would we still have the legacy cost that would be attributed to this program?
You're going to carry a certain amount of legacy cost based upon the eligibility of those individuals who would be laid off in the event that you close down the CHA program. It's the same thing with the nursing home, there were, we laid off essentially 100 and some employees, there were a percentage of those that were entitled to long-term benefits, that becomes our legacy cost. It's a, not, you know, not everyone that works there is going to be entitled to health insurance benefits and legacy costs. It's going to be based upon their years of service, whether they have enough or not, those kinds of things.
Thank you. Mr. Preston.
Yeah, Dan, my understanding was that it was at $100,000 loss now, but for the year, projecting possibly 200,000?
Again, that's going to, it's going to depend on, number one, the volume of business that we do, if in fact, if in fact that private company starts to take more of the business, then potentially the losses will get higher. Depends on how that plays out, I don't know the answer to that. And secondly, the critical area will be what the reimbursement rates will end up in terms of both Medicaid and private insurance. The other issue that we have is we have some coverage under private insurance, but it's now become managed care, which essentially means we reduce the amount we pay you and expect you to do more for less.
Yeah, I guess just...
My feeling has been for a number of years that I'm not sure we need to be in this business, it's non-mandated. There is somebody out there that can pick up the slack, so to speak, and if it hits 200,000, that's what, 1 and 1/4% on our tax levy?
200,000 is one. But yeah, I mean, you're, that's a decision.
It's up to the board, I realize that.
Yeah, I realize. It's not an easy choice, because there will be incidents where, you know, when you get down to one company doing business in the county, and the question becomes, will they have enough nurses and will they have enough people to do it? And ultimately, that will come back to you guys, because somebody will pick up the phone and say, okay, my constituent is not being served, you know, especially in some of the rural areas. That's always been the concern, when you run a private company only, they will not necessarily chase to the places where it's not going to pay them to do so.
Yeah, but I understand that, but I also know on that flip side of the coin is, there's a lot of people out there that have been in the service by this, the service we're providing, that don't really, they don't need to have it to begin with. I mean, I know very wealthy people that are, that have been serviced by this.
Remember, we build them.
Right, and when somebody that can afford it, if we build, we're not covering our expenses.
Well, that's, that's an ongoing issue with the managed care, you know, insurance companies. Look, you know, we have a loss ratio here of 1.7% basically, and you got to understand that Medicaid, Medicare, and private insurance companies have people whose sole job it is is to deny claims because it...
Oh, I understand all of that, I just don't think we can afford this anymore, that's all.
But I will say this, in fairness to the CHA, at one time, we were at like 500,000 in losses a year. So this, this CHA unit that you're currently talking about has stepped up and has done a good job of reducing that overall cost, even among lowering reimbursements. So, you know, in fairness, it should be noted that that has occurred. Ultimately though, whether the board chooses to continue in this business becomes a decision of the board.
As someone that has utilized the service both on the private, from the private sector and from the county sector, I'll be the first to tell you that the county care is, in my opinion, head and shoulders above anything else around. And I think that's important, to have that service provided to our constituents. I think we need to do that. I feel that if you look at medical service providers and you see a 5% or 6% loss ratio, I think you're looking at someone or an entity that is working very hard to keep their losses at a minimum. Our federal level is far in excess of that, and most private levels are far in excess of that. And I understand that any loss is not something you want to have, but I also think we need to realize how hard our people are working and what a great job they're doing.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I've never had anything but compliments from people who've been served. Fortunately, I haven't had to have the service, but over, never complained, and over and over, some people have paid, I know, and some people that just needed it, but it was...
Thank you.
...good service.
Yes.
I had a constituent just three weeks ago, actually, whose elderly couple, his wife fell, broke her hip. Now, this guy was always complaining about his county tax. I ran into him at Stewart's, he said, you will never hear me complain about my county tax again because of public help. In fact, his wife wouldn't even have been released from the hospital. This is another issue that people need to understand. If you don't have nursing care available to you, you're going to stay in the hospital. So it can actually end up costing the county even more money on our share of the Medicaid. But I support public health, and it's one of those services that you don't appreciate it until you need it. And once you need it, you're going to find out how important it really is to have it.
Thank you.
I'm not on this committee, but I want to echo the comments by my crew colleagues on the other side of the room. I have personal experience with both our public health and private nursing, and I got to tell you, it was mentioned before, the private nursing, it's difficult. My latest experience was treatments that were supposed to happen went a week, and it was critical that these treatments can't go a week without happening, and public health is there every week. We're so rural, if you have a problem and you need a nursing service, it's almost impossible to get some of them. And I think this is part of what we all need to understand, is how critical it is in a rural area. It's not like a metropolitan area where there's lots of services, lots of agencies, lots of nurses. Up here, without public help, there's a lot of people that I don't know what's going to happen to them. Some of them are going to have extreme medical emergencies.
Thank you. Mr. Harrington?
Thank you. I have evidence of home healthcare services for elderly that without that support, they would have spent their final years in nursing. So I know that this is very important to the elderly and to their, it also generates a lot of support from families. Families, of course, do not want to see their parents spend their final years in a nursing home, I guess, home health care service system if that not occurring.
Thank you. Mr. Bleed?
I'll do the same question, I recognize the fact, the importance of this type of service to the elderly. I guess, you know, I'm curious, do we have a program where we charge based upon their income status? As Randy said, I mean, you have somebody, you have probably a number of people that certainly can afford the service, do they pay a different fee than someone who can't pay?
Well, no more different than a hospital. So when you're in a hospital, you have Medicare, and you're wealthy, your Medicare pays, it doesn't, it doesn't change anything. So I do whatever insurance you have, I don't, if you're wealthy and Medicare pays me, I don't know, 90 cents on a dollar, you could pay the other 10 cents, I can't come after you for that, because that's your insurance company, that's what we accepted as...
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was an extra, a charge or an add-on for sending our people to their house, whatever. Just trying to figure out a way to close the gap.
I understand, I totally understand, I really do.
Thanks. Mr. Preston?
David, I just, I just want to be clear, I'm not faulting anyone over there and saying they're not doing a good job. It's just as I see us going into another nasty budget year, and with the cap being at .73, you know, somewhere along the line, tough decisions may have to be made, and I put that out there. I can see from the response here on the floor that there isn't support there, but it is a non-mandated service that I thought we should at least, let's find out where everybody stands on this, because it's 1% on the tax levy.
Thank you. Mr. Scazin?
Can we offer, can we, and if we can, do we offer a payment plan?
Yeah.
Do? Okay.
Are you going to credit card billing? You know, I think one of the things that's really the issue is what we're getting reimbursed at. It has nothing to do with that people can pay or what pay. I mean, private insurance companies or Medicaid, Medicare, they set the rate, I can't negotiate any different. If skilled nursing services, they give me $89, I'm going to get $89. And we get $89 consistently, we are good at billing, we've had glitches, but no worse or more than anybody else. The nurses turn over more, I should say, they visit more people than they ever have historically, they are, we are smarter, better, more efficient at all of those things. Coupled with the decreasing amount of revenue that we've gotten, it's absolutely, I think, amazing how well our CHA has really stepped up. But I'm not going to lie, there's a cost, and you all have to decide whether what that cost is, and is it worth it? You know, my heart says it is, and I echo the point about being rural. I also think of this as a preparedness thing, in the event of an emergency, and there's a crisis, I don't know, H1N9, and we have to immunize people quickly. Where are those nurses coming from? If they're county nurses, I can, every one of our nurses is trained in preparedness, they all do pods, they're all trained to immunize, stand up in an emergency situation. Don Jenkins, Patty Bashaw, and I, we drill it all the time. We can assemble those nurses to open up shelters, to do whatever is necessary to protect the citizens of this county. If this was a massive thing, like New York City involved, the resources we're not becoming to Essex County, we would fend for ourselves, and I think we're in a great position to fend for ourselves with the group of people we have. We need to play, you know, I think you should consider that not just the CHA, but what they offer as a backup to a lot of other systems.
Mr. Grinnell? Okay, and Dan, I have one question. We need to move on to the motion on the floor. I have one question, and that's in regards to the $152,000 that the request to write off. Is there any of that money that we could recover if we were to go after the individuals illegally?
Well, here's the problem with going after the individuals, and we've done this, we tried this at the nursing home. We went out the bid, we specifically asked for a collection based upon a percentage, no one would take that. What it came down to, the collection, was based upon a hourly rate of $250 an hour. What we found out was, by the time we paid the attorneys, we were paying the attorneys more than what we were collecting. So I think at the 1.7% loss ratio, nobody likes to do this, but I think it's a valid way to go. We are getting some pressure from our auditors that, look, you guys have got to, you got to, you got to take care of this, because under... to, you got to, you got to take care of this, because under general municipal accounting, you have to account for these losses, and you have to write them off." I specifically said to Linda that five years is too long. I don't want to wait that. We will see this number sooner going forward, because I do not want to wait this long for a loss ratio.
If there be no further discussion, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this. We'll start with Mr. Harrington.
And we're voting on what?
A resolution to write off 152,000 as bad debt under general municipal law. Mr. Merriman.
Yes.
Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. Bledi.
Yes.
Mr. Gillett.
Yes.
Mr. Skazapov.
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell.
Yes.
And I have changed my mind on writing off bad debt. I'm voting no. Any questions for public health?
Do we have anyone?
No.
If not, we'll move on to Office of the Aging, Patty Bashel.
No, I'm trying to get money, dude. I have nothing to request this morning. I just do want to say that HEAP will be mailing soon. We have not had our training yet, so I can't really give you the ins and outs of it. But probably at your local level, within the next month, you'll start hearing people saying, "I'm getting my HEAP letter. If they're having trouble getting it filled out, please give us a call. We'd be more than happy to go out and help them."
Thank you. Any questions for Office of the Aging?
Thank you.
Thank you. Transportation, Nancy Dugle.
Good morning, Nancy.
I did put a resolution request on your desk. I do need to make a correction. It's only one bus I'm asking to put up for surplus. We just got the estimate back, and it was above $12,000 to repair it.
Okay, would somebody like to move that we surplus that one bus? Mr. Bledi, seconded by Mr. Preston. Discuss it. All in favor? I oppose. So, Gary, anything else, Nancy?
Yeah, I'm going to talk about taxis and Medicaid. I wasn't going to, but hearing about cuts, and Essex County has a cap, well, their cap is not a cap if they're taking money away from public health and mental health and co-pays. They get, they spent $1.2 million in taxis to get people to medical appointments in 2014. The total amount spent was 1.4 million. I have quite a few, a lot of information. Not Dan O'Neill, but another DSS commissioner has stated, "It doesn't really matter, because the feds and the state pick it up." Well, I'm a federal and state taxpayer, so I take offense to it not mattering. Again, as you see, they're just finding another way to take it out of us by reducing payment. And one of the, John O'Neill did ask questions at a commissioners meeting, and one of the other counties told him, the state told him, "Medicaid enrollment has increased significantly under Affordable Care Act." My response is, "Public transit info, according to New York State DOH website, the number of enrollees increased 3.88% in 2014. The largest increase was in 2009, equalling 6.15%. There was a 23% increase statewide of the cost of Medicaid The next point was, fees that were previously frozen have been allowed to increase in recent years. Taxis used to receive a regular rate increase. They used to be at $1.65 per mile when we were dispatching. From pickup to drop-off, deadhead miles. They changed to $1.80 and with an $8 pickup fee. They are now at $2.20 per mile with a pickup fee of $10. I have not been able to get an answer to the payment of deadhead miles, but when a taxi drives from Taconerooga to Lake Placid to take a person, from Greenwood Avenue to Lake Placid Hospital, I don't see how they can do it for that amount of money. Part of the transportation showing up in the marsh was previously under managed care. I don't know what that means. I'm looking at today's numbers. Overall, there is a cost savings under MAS. Transportation costs per enrollee are down. This is not true. I went to the website. I've gotten all the information. The cost per enrollee for 2014 for New York State was $92, an $18 increase over 2013. Essex County costs per enrollee for transportation is $209. I have some information for Clinton County, just so you know, it's not just us. Prior to MAS, the state takeover, Essex, Clinton County Public Transportation had 300 rides per month. They now have 30 or less. Medicaid transportation costs in Clinton County are expected to be a 400% increase this year, $2.2 million. We averaged 121 rides per month prior to 7/1/2012, the day MAS took over. Now our average is 14. June, we had six. July, we had six. That's all.
Can I get a copy?
Yes. Actually, I'll make copies of everything, because I have the tables. I took all the information from the state website. They have the number of enrollees, the amount of the cost, everything.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Skazapov. I've talked about this with Nancy in the past, and this has turned into a very lucrative business. And I have cab companies, starting in my town. I know Taconerooga has them, Crown Point. And taxpayer money is taxpayer money. The problem that I'm hearing is there's no checks and balances anywhere. There's no regulations on these cabs. These cabs are being spotted at Walmart grocery stores, people getting in, people getting out of them. I really think if it's within our power, I'm not certain how it is, but we need to come up with some kind of a uniform set of standards and regulations, and even a medallion fee, so you just can't run out, buy a used car, slap a sticker on the door, and, you know, Tom's Taxi Service. It's just, it's going to be a hu, it is a problem right now, and this problem's only going to escalate. And we need to try to do something, I think, it's got to be uniform, something at the county level, try and get a handle on this and get some regulations in place. And I'm not sure if we have the power to do that. I haven't had a chance to talk to Dan Manning on it.
Taconerooga has seen a real increase in the number of taxi companies, and we have done what my colleague is describing. We have rules and regulations in place. We have medallions that go in the cabs and identification for the drivers. They're all on a list with the town clerk, and our police department has just begun the enforcement process now that these documentation is available. And some of the things we're finding on a regular basis are drivers not properly licensed, vehicles not properly licensed. We've had drivers without a license. We've had vehicles with no insurance. Any number of issues with near state traffic violations that just, and business violations that just aren't being followed up on at the state level. We are seeing a reduction in the number of cabs available in Taconerooga. I don't know if the influx in Mariah is part of that, but if you don't take action, there is an awful lot of very questionable enterprise going on in that industry right now.
Now, would you say that any solution to this should take place at the state level?
No. I think, I'm a firm believer in local government, local enforcement, local control. And I think if you want the best bang for your buck, you go to the town or county level to get it done.
The reason that I say county wide law, if it's possible, is that these cabs are going town to town. So I mean, you can't have a set of regulations in Taconerooga that are different than the regulations in Mariah, or different than regulations in Lake Placid and so on. Let me ask that, who schedules the medical, does our, how is our social services department involved in this, and are we involved in it in any way?
They're not.
Okay, we're completely out of it.
The state took over. Medical Answering Services now does approval for Medicaid applications, and they take calls for rides. I was at a roundtable with a couple senators. One of them was O'Neill. There was a person there that wanted to ride the bus. It took him 58 minutes to go through an operator to get a bus ride. It would take him 30 seconds to get a cab ride.
We can discuss this later with Dan Manning and see if there's...
Yeah. That's a state problem.
It is. I mean, I mean, you certainly can control how cabs are licensed and operated within, you know, probably, I would assume maybe a countywide, but I'm not sure. But certainly you could do it at the local level. But the, ultimately, who decides who's getting in that cab and how much is being paid for it is the state of New York.
Any further discussion?
Yes, which department oversees it for the state?
They actually formed a new, what's called Medicaid Transport.
Right.
I think there's actually a program now at the state level that was identified as the overseer, so to speak, of Medicaid transport.
Well, assuming that Dan's not petty little label speaker about this, I mean, I would think like they would have to be.
Anything else? If not, thank you. Is there anything else for Human Services?
Uh, Mr. Grinnell? I don't know if it's being ordered to do so, but if John was here, I'd ask him if we'd have a resolution, condolence even if it was out of state, to the Washington County, Vermont, where the social service worker was murdered on Friday. I mean, it's only an hour and a half away from Elizabeth County.
I think that's very appropriate. Are you...
I'm not on the committee.
Would Mr. Merriman, do we have a second?
Second.
You and I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anything else? If not, we're here.